Okay, thanks for coming, everybody. We initially started at six o'clock with a meeting, went right into executive session. We came out of the executive session at seven oh three, and I'd like to stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a hearing about the American Rescue Plan Act, Mrs. Solomon.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to talk about some of the federal funding you've been hearing about. The American Rescue Plan Act. From the federal money, it's a grant. The dates for the grant runs from March thirteenth, two thousand twenty through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. This is part of the funding that was, has been talked about at previous board meetings. And so now we're going to tell you a little bit more as we have more guidance on it. The American Rescue Plan Act, which has been, you may have heard of ARPA, that's the acronym for it. It was posted, we have to have our plan posted to the district website by July first, two thousand twenty-one, on how such funds will be expended, how the district will prioritize spending on non-recurring expenses. And I'm going to get into the detail of why it's non-recurring in a little bit. So keep that thought in your mind. And then the district shall seek public comment from parents, teachers, and other stakeholders. And at this time, the grant applications have not yet been posted. So we're still waiting more guidance. So there are two pots of money. One is the ARPA SIR III. And that is because there was an SIR I that was CARES funding that went and ended. We are using it as of June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. And then there is another pot of money that will go through two thousand twenty-three. And then there's the ARPA funds. So the ARPA funds is broken out into four categories for the grant. There's to address learning loss for our students that happened during the pandemic. We are to create summer enrichment programs and after-school programming. And then there are other available allowable uses for the funding, which is not specifically earmarked for the other three items. So for the SIR III Eden State grant allocation is two hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. There is no formal requirement for summer enrichment with these grant funds. And there is no formal requirement for after-school programming with these funds. And what is available in other allowable uses is eight hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, for a total of one million eighty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And because of our demographics to New York State, they've given us an additional state allocation. Of that additional state allocation, there is four hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars that has been allocated to learning loss. Then there's summer enrichment, which has a hundred thousand two dollars. After-school program, a hundred thousand two dollars, for a total of the additional state allocation of seven hundred thousand. So in total, Eden Central School District until September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three has an allocation for expenditures of learning loss, seven hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars. Summer enrichment, a hundred thousand two dollars. After-school programming, a hundred thousand two dollars. Available for other allowable uses, then you'll see the additional state allocation was not money that was not specifically targeted. So the eight hundred sixty-eight, six thirty-nine comes from the SIR III funding, for a total of one million seven hundred and eighty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So Eden Central School has been meeting and working and trying to find ways that makes sense to address the learning losses and the issues that occurred because of the pandemic. So under services designed to combat learning loss due to pandemic, there will be a summer enrichment program for grades K through twelve. After-school AIS, grades K through five. Response to intervention plan, which is considered called RTI, you've heard of it, I'm sure, in the past. Reading recovery and AIS enhancement, grades K through five. Increased academic enhancement for grades six through eight. Increased academic enhancement program for grades nine through twelve. And a bridge to accelerated opportunities. Services designed to improve academic performance is an implementation of a multi-tier system of supports. So in case you weren't aware of what that means, it's a systematic, continuous improvement framework in which data-based problem solving and decision-making is practiced across all levels of an educational system for supporting students. The ARPA reporting, the LEA shall ident, this was right from the information we were given on how to write our grant, shall identify any program utilizing such funding that are expected to continue beyond the availability of such federal funds, and identify local funds that will be used to maintain such programs in order to minimize disruption to the core academic and other school programs. This is a caution. If our plan spends all our funds on new initiatives, we may not have local funds to identify to maintain those programs. Hence the advice not to use for recurring costs. Doing things for learning loss may seem like it's a continuing, and it may very well be. But at this time, these funds are being utilized to address the learning loss that occurred during the pandemic. Questions, comments?
Mrs. Solomon, what do we have in this year's budget for summer enrichment? It's been like thirty-some-odd grand?
Yes, in anticipation, we did budget, I believe it was thirty-eight thousand dollars for summer enrichment.
Okay, so that'd be coming out of the hundred thousand that's allocated. So basically, if you look at it over the next three years, we could run summer enrichment and utilize those funds there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Could you please come to the microphone so I'm sure I can hear you?
Can you push the button on a microphone? Can you define pots of money?
When I refer to pots of money, I'm looking at the way that the grant is written and broken down. This is all federal money. And so they divide it up, you can use so much, it's similar to your budget. You have so much for your mortgage, so much for your electricity, so much for groceries. Well, they've taken it into learning loss, summer school, after-school, and then unspecified amounts that we can use for district needs. So when I'm talking pots of money, that's when I'm talking about the total division of the federal money.
So your definition of taxpayer dollars is pots of money?
No, sir. My definition was to find a way to simplify the distribution of the federal funding.
Yes, that's federal tax dollars, not pots of money. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have, do we have a request to withdraw this, the guidance from the consent agenda?
Sorry.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent's consensus items be approved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
This is the approximate position and time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit.
Good evening, Superintendent Sorticio and Board of Education members. First, I'd like to begin by thanking you for serving our students and the work and effort of a year like none other. Below are some personal thoughts that I bring to everyone listening in the room this evening, called the ember. There's a strong ember smoldering in our community. I stand here with some difficult questions. If we proceed openly with calm compassion and understanding that respects all stakeholders, I believe something beautiful can happen. If we don't have these awkward, difficult discussions, what happens to Eden's ember? What does our two thousand twenty-one comeback look like and feel like? Our parents, teachers, staff, coaches, and community are a strong group of bright, positive people. We want nothing more than our children and students to grow strong and to be able to think for themselves, especially in this volatile world we find ourselves living in. Teachers, you know your students, you appreciate the uniqueness, their different personalities, their varying cultures, and the family settings they bring to your classroom each day. It fuels the ember. Parents, you know your children more than anyone. You watch out for your children's classmates and other students in our community because they are important components in each different child's life. Parents, we fuel the ember. Coaches, you give tough advice your athletes need to hear. They don't want to hear the same advice from their parents, only you. You ask them to push themselves further than they have ever known they could. Coaches, you fuel the ember. These are just my personal observations, and I speak for myself when I say from the bottom of my heart, Eden is a special place. It is because we embrace one another, we accept one another, we push one another, and we stoke the fire. Our community raises amazing kids. Collectively, we know the ways to make them feel successful. Our ember is building. If we leave it to do nothing, if we don't make changes for our kids, what does our two thousand twenty-one ember do next year? Will it burn out or become a thriving flame? To our Board of Education and school leaders, what will your decisions for next year do to this ember? I am here to ask you to stoke this fire. Will your school reopening plans for remote, in-person, masking, or personal vaccine choice tear down this pride, encouragement, team spirit, and let this flaming ember burn out? Don't let your decisions strip away the amazing qualities of our unique community built by our respectful teaching staff, parents, coaches, and community members. I asked you this evening, what happened to that flame in June, two thousand eighteen, with the repeal of religious exemptions? If you don't know, twenty-six thousand two hundred and seventeen students were removed from public schools across the state. How many students do you think will be pulled from this school system to be homeschooled or attend private educational settings next year if Eden remains under a mask or vaccine mandate? If we stand by and continue to allow the governor to blindly lead policies in Eden, he will burn out our ember. Our ember, this beautiful glowing ember in Eden. It could be squelched because individuals won't feel the embrace, the love, and the acceptance that the community has to offer here in Eden. This year was a gut punch to many struggling students and parents. Masking and forced vaccination will sever an already stressed community that has dealt with remote, hybrid, and in-person instruction models. The disconnect that could build between parents, teachers, coaches, and students after flipping back and forth through these worlds of remote and hybrid instruction could be heartbreaking. It could make our comeback a larger, challenging task than it should be. Consider your policies for next year with mindfulness. Will there be noise and distress that affect the ember in our schools? Or will you bring a comeback that our school community is proud of and rallies behind because you implement family choice? There is little reason to trust that what is best for Eden is coming down from our state. Let's use our own communities, hearts, minds, and talents as a collective group of stakeholders to decide what is best for this special town and the children in it. What decisions will you make for next year's return to instruction? I expect no answer from you this evening. You didn't reply to me in January, when my son William was randomly tested, even though he denied his own personal consent. I heard nothing except from Mr. Sorticio. After several missteps of miscommunication with technology and phone and email issues, I'm part of both myself and the school. But I ask, if my son were a crying kindergarten girl, would he have been tested? If he was a sobbing teenage girl, would he have been tested? And not one of you reached out with a reply to my email except of Mr. Sorticio. I've kept these things in all year, and I've kept myself with a stone game face for my children at home through the changes they've had to go through. This past week, I've had the privilege of talking with over one hundred six, some of over one hundred sixty parents and residents whose names are on petitions you will receive this evening that have questions as well. How many community members pulling their kids from our school is enough for you? Are you comfortable answering to a family of a vaccine-injured child when they take a rushed vaccine to attend school under a policy that you have required? What communications have you had with the Eden Teachers Association and their leadership at NICEIT regarding two thousand twenty-one reopening plans? What science will drive your policies for next year? The science of our state leadership, who says that a child can attend karate unmasked but must sit in a mask for six hours a day with limited breaks, only at lunch or when outdoors? Why can't you offer hybrid next year, when you've shown us this year that school isn't just the brick-and-mortar building it was? You gave us choice this year, choice for hybrid or remote, choice for remote or return to in-person instruction. Why should unmasking be any different? The community is watching. Will you stoke this ember like Superintendent Halsey at Pioneer and Superintendent McCabe in Akron? They've stoked the fire, and they burned applause from not only their own community, but neighboring communities across the county. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Beth Weersbaugh, and I'm a mother to two, and soon to be three students here at Eden. I have a fourth grader, a first grader, and my youngest will be in pre-K in the fall. First, I also want to thank you for all that was done to make this crazy year possible. It was not easy, and we appreciate what was done to make it happen. The safety measures that were taken to ensure everyone was safe. When the rates were high and there was, there were still so many unknowns, we all did all that we could to get these kids in here as much as possible and to get them the education that they deserve. But now, with Erie County's rates at point four percent and seventy percent of adults vaccinated, we've chosen to. We just don't understand why these, why these masks are still being mandated for our kids. From the very beginning, it's been said that, at the beginning of COVID, it's been said that young children are the lowest risk, the least vulnerable. So why are they the ones still being expected to mask up for seven hours a day? Kids that have gone to daycare for the past year haven't been masked up, and things there have been under control. All the teachers and staff that have chosen to have been vaccinated, and I believe most here have been. We've been told to follow the science, so why aren't we? Why are adults able to come and go now into pretty much any public place without a mask on? But our kids are still here, last week in the sweltering heat, wearing masks all day long. Kids being sent to the nurse who felt like they were going to pass out, and I heard that she was giving them cracker and water, crackers and water. Kids with bad allergies had to either just stay home because they couldn't wear a mask all day, or they suffered through the day with the mask on, their parents would come and pick them up because they couldn't make it through the day. Our teachers, I'm very thankful for our teachers, they've been great, and they've been, with all these conditions, they've been great with these kids. But we need to stop these mask mandates now. I'm asking for now, and I'm asking for the fall and next year. There has been talk about a possible vaccine mandate, and I'm assuming that's why he's keeping these kids masked until he can get the mandate put through for the fall. Many parents are concerned about this, being such a new vaccine that right now is not FDA-approved, only for emergency use. It hasn't been tested as long as other vaccines that are mandated for school. Yes, they're telling us it's safe, and I want to believe that that's true. But how do we know that's true for everyone? It's just to know, and there are so many unknowns. We are hearing about the adverse reaction, the blood clots, myocarditis, and many other hospitalizations because of side effects. Are you comfortable with the liability of a child getting an adverse reaction from the vaccine because of a policy that you enforced? That will be on your shoulders, and how will you answer those parents? I've included in what I'm going to give you some information about that, it's on paragraph fourteen that I highlighted. So we, as parents, have understandable concerns. Are you really going to force our kids to get this to go to school? Is it really necessary for young kids, the least affected by COVID? I've asked their pediatrician and numerous other doctors and nurses. They can't even give me a straight answer or reassurance on need for it or the safety. Everyone I've asked says something different. Yes, we encourage it, no, kids don't need it. So we, as parents, should be able to choose if we want this for our kids or not. We have their health and well-being and best interests in mind. We all know our own circumstances. Or at the very least, if there is a mandate, can we choose to send our kids to school in a mask? We just want the choice. We want our kids here full-time in person, but please give us the choice. Numerous parents that I have spoken to, so Jen and I both got our petition signed, together we collectively have a hundred and seventy signatures, and we only went to people that we know. We didn't, you know, go to others that we didn't. But numerous parents that I have talked to told me that if this vaccine is mandated for their kids, they will pull them from school, go homeschool, or do whatever they have to do. We don't want to, but we will. Are you really going to make us make that choice? Or are you going to fight with us and for us and our kids? We all know the position you are in. You have to listen to the guidance from the higher-ups, the CDC, the Department of Health, the State Education Department, the governor. Trust me, we've been calling them all, emailing, sending letters, voicing our concerns, and advocating for our kids and this school. But will you? Will you tell them this or send them letters and emails asking them these questions and concerns? Who else do we need to contact? The teachers unions, the Board of Superintendents? I want to know, I'll call. Will you advocate for us, for our kids? Do we have any say here anymore for our school, for our kids? Do you? You all run this school, and we are the parents of the kids that go here. We are the taxpayers that also fund this school. Why are we left to feel like we no longer have a say? Is this all about money, not the best interest of these kids? I've heard about the worries of lost funding or being forced to shut down and go fully remote if you don't comply and follow the guidance. When is someone going to take a stand? Pioneer Superintendent has, why can't we? He's doing what is right for his school and what the parents and community want. Why aren't we standing up like this, every district? Standing up for what is right and what should be. Other states have ended these mandates. Schools have been going five days a week all year, and their rates are the same as ours, if not higher. And I've seen and heard about the emotional and psychological effects that this has had on our kids. This is more of a worry to us than this virus. I've seen the change in my nine-year-old son. The kid who has always had a positive attitude, a joyful disposition, and a love for school and learning. His teacher this year told me at our conference that he has such a calm demeanor in the classroom, he's always so helpful and positive, and his grades are great. What he didn't see is the kid who comes home from school and cries for an hour in his room because he can't talk to his classmates and felt so isolated. He was bored with school, he told me he didn't even want to go because they can't do anything or be near anyone. This broke my heart. He lost his love for school. I'm so thankful we are back five days now and how things have finally eased out because I don't know where we would be if we were still hybrid and remote with all the barriers and restrictions. A friend of mine who signed this petition told me that her daughter's here at the high school, and she had four or five kids in her class this year in Brylin. That breaks my heart. When is enough enough? Because we've had enough. We have a no bullying policy here at school for kids that it won't be tolerated. So why are we, as a district, tolerating being bullied? Told what we need to do. They don't know what's going on in our individual town. Why are these decisions not being made by the district's discretion? I'm asking you. For all that are here with me and that sign this petition, what are you going to do? We want answers. Are you going to fight for us and with us? Is concern parents, neighbors, family, and friends, and fellow Eden taxpayers, where do you stand? Please don't make so many of us make a decision that we don't want to make, to pull our kids from the school. I personally was disgusted with the way kids and parents were treated a couple of years ago when they did away with their religious exemptions. Their kids were forced out of the school if they didn't comply with the new mandates. Parents were called and told they had to pick their kid up from school in the afternoon because he couldn't ride the bus home when he'd already been there most of the day. Parents whose tax dollars fund this school, and now their kids can't even go here. Kids who went to school with our kids for years up until that point, and it never mattered then. But then they changed the law, law that a lot of other states don't even have. But did you push back at all then? I didn't see anyone fighting for these families. Administration just complied with what they were told to do and pushed them out of here. I'm already pulling my oldest son, he'll be attending private school in the fall. And depending on what happens in the fall, what decisions are made, I won't hesitate to do the same with my other two boys. We would like answers, but most of all, we want results. What's it going to take? Pull all of our kids out of school, stop paying our, our school taxes? From what I understand, you have to submit your plans for next year to the state by the summer. We're bringing this to you now, so you know what we want. So we can all work together and give our kids a year that they deserve. No masks, no mandates, in school, five days, full-time. Please don't tell us that you're advised by your attorneys not to make a comment. I got that a couple of years ago, the last time I came here, asking for answers and your support. Or that you have to follow guidance given to you by the state. We've already heard that. We are looking for support and results. Thank you so much for your time.
Anybody else?
I'm Adam Chanicki. We actually just moved to the district a few months ago, in a large part because of this great school. We were at great new meetings with Carter for my daughter Remy. We were at great new meetings with Carter for my daughter Remy here to go to kindergarten next year and my son to go to UTK. She's been thrilled until the recent weeks when she started asking questions about what school is going to be like next year. Now, when we have to tell her she might have to wear a mask, she cries and doesn't want to go anymore. It breaks my heart to have to tell her that. Sitting here today, I echo what your previous speaker said. My wife is considering homeschooling next year. I'm an engineer as my career. You know, I live in the world of science. And I struggle to read the data on the CDC website, and none of it makes sense as to why kids still today are being forced to wear masks. And it just is mind boggling to me that children like my daughter and all these other parents' kids can't do kids anymore. So with that, I beg you to stand up, do what's right for these kids. Join forces with the other schools, you know. You guys link together, go to the governor. Form a task force, whatever it takes, fight for these kids. That's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Flowers. Um, I don't have a prepared speech, but I just want to add that I think a lot of us are very frustrated, even more so. The governor has lifted the mandate everywhere else. Our kids can go everywhere else. Everybody can go everywhere, but we only have to keep masks at school. It's flat out ridiculous. There is no reason for it um, other than honestly control. And we all have the feeling, you know, where this is headed. He even said himself that if you're vaccinated, you don't have to worry about whether or not another person's vaccinated. So having said that, he needs to allow people to make their own choice. Um, and we will continue to fight at that level, but we need support. We need backup, or else nothing's going to change. Thank you.
My name is Brittany Janicki. My husband just came up and spoke as well. Obviously, we're very passionate about unmasking our children. We were on that call, like you said, with Mrs. Carter, and she was saying how proud she was of Eden having FED five days a week and how they handled the bus drops off and the parents pickups with this year, and everything's been, you know, crazy and chaotic, but she was so proud of Eden. And wouldn't it be great to just say that you're proud of Eden for standing up against our governor that wants to put masks on our children? And I really find it funny that I have to stand in front of a microphone because I don't think the teachers are in front of a microphone. And we're probably no further distance than the back end of a classroom. And what are those kids hearing in a mask from a teacher? That's why we have that summer program you're talking about. The kids are behind. Nobody can hear anything in a mask. There was the meme, the Charlie Brown meme. I think we all seen it, right? I understand the teacher now because it was blah, 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 blah. And that's what the kids are hearing. Masks aren't in, they shouldn't be in a classroom. Just look at this. Look at this meeting. It's sad. We're all sitting, these kids are all in front of a computer. Right? Disconnect to reconnect. That's what we have all been saying, and now we have to constantly be in front of a computer because we can't be with each other. How are these kids going to learn socialization? And like one of the parents said, you know, they talk about allergies, and if you've got allergies, you might have a reaction to the shot. My son has a rare skin condition where he overproduces histamine. We have to have an apipen with us at all times. Now, if I take the chance because I want him to go to a public school so we can have friends and have a public education, I have to take a risk. Do I give him the shot and hope that he doesn't have a reaction? Is that, is that something you want to deal with? So that I can enroll my son in the public school and give him the education he's supposed to get and deserve. Now, I quit my job last year to stay with my kids, not because I was afraid of COVID, but because I did not want them to wear a mask. And I don't want them to wear a mask, and I will stay home again, and I will teach my children and give them the education that they deserve.
Is there anybody else?
We've been at every other district without masks. My name is Pete Harding. I'm with Unmasked New York Kids. It's a group we started a month ago. Three mothers started at Wells Elementary School, and it's grown to this. We've been at every district. We've created email lists with every single district superintendent on it and every board member. So when you're receiving those emails from us that we hope you're not deleting because we're tracking every single email that we're sending to you guys to see if you guys have actually listened to it or viewed it. Because that's evidence at this point, guys. We want to work with you. That's all we want to do. We want to do the right thing for all of these kids, all right? Right now, flexibility options in New York State are Grease, St. Francis, and a number of other private schools as well. We've even heard the argument from public schools that have stated those are private schools. It's not a public school. What should just be about safety and children, right? But it's not. Pioneer, of course, we know, I'm going to talk about that briefly, Webster, Smithtown. And guys, I really, really appreciate you guys giving everybody extended time. Thank you for being so gracious. We really do respect and appreciate you, and I heard some compliments tonight. I won't say from whom, but one of the individuals that was here gives you guys a lot of credit and a lot of accolades. He said that you guys all are one of the best boards he has ever seen, and he has experience on boards. So thank you for doing that and trying to do the best that you can in very difficult circumstances. We are here for you guys and every other single district in Erie County to give you the research, to provide you with the protection so you guys can protect yourself. Because what we do know, because we work with superintendents former and current and board members, former and current, that each and every one of you guys for the decisions that you make are liable. Personally, civilly, and criminally, masks are listed as a medical experimental device federally. They violate state, federal, and international law, also Nuremberg trials. You cannot perform medical experimentation on a child that is against the law. Governor Cuomo, Gail Burstein, and Howard Zucker has have all thrown you under the bus. We've all watched every single one of them on camera state very clearly, it is not their decision. They cannot force the schools to do anything. That the schools are autonomous and unilateral in their decision-making ability. They have all done that on camera. We know that because Pioneer and Benjamin Halsey, there were two hundred and fifty people at Pioneer last night. I've been to about thirty-five or forty rallies in the past three weeks to be here for these guys, these parents, these children. How many rallies have you guys been to? How much research have you guys done? I'm going to ask you guys, why am I the one doing the research? Do you guys know why the kids are wearing the masks? Have you even wondered? Do you know how they're protecting you? Do you know how they're protecting the children? Do you know how many children are contracting it? Do you even know how many have died? I know I've done the research. We're doing this to provide it to you guys so that you no longer have to be subservient to Governor Cuomo. You guys have the authority. Superintendents have told us that New York State Board of Superintendents has confirmed that with us. Members of that association, school board members have confirmed that with us. And this list of schools and Pioneer, and I'll get back to that. Two hundred and fifty parents showed up last night. Two hundred and fifty parents showed up for a superintendent. When have you ever seen that? Nobody has ever seen that. That man and that board, they're heroes. You drive into that town and the town says, if you live here, you better believe you're free. The biggest American flag I've ever seen. That's a rural town. So is Eden. How are they different there than here? How are the children anymore at risk? How is the superintendent, I apologize, I don't know your name, the superintendent, I hope that I get to know every one of you guys. I hope that you learn to trust us as a resource, as an ally, as a liaison for this information. But how can he do it without risking the board? Last night stated very clearly, because the night before we were in Holland and the Holland board member Jerry Vella, he's an attorney, I hope it's Jerry, I thought it was Larry, but it's Vella, Mr. Vella anyways. He's an attorney, and he stated very clearly that in two weeks, he was going to be, he meaning superintendent, superintendent Benjamin Halsey was going to be fired. He very confidently and boldly asserted that. The board and Pioneer said, he's not going anywhere. There's no way we fire this man. Because he's doing the right things. He can be a hero. He is a hero. You can all be heroes as well. The other schools that are open, Wabanger Falls, Levittown, Hilton, Cuba Rushford, and and it's a secret. And how terrible is it that this has to be a secret? How terrible is it that this school district, it's here, it's in the county, and I'm not going to mention it here because we're an open forum. And I'm sure some of you know of it. But they, they won't even answer the phones because they're so scared that the media is going to come down on them, and the teachers union and lawyers are going to come down on them. I'm going to ask you this question as well. So the responses that we're getting right now are liability, liability, liability. What if one person catches COVID from a student that's not wearing a mask? Well, I'm going to ask you guys, we've done the research, and I implore you. If you can find one case in the entire country, let us know. One case, please, because there have been almost forty states representing tens of thousands of schools, tens of millions of children that have been wide open since 2020. Some never shut down. South Dakota notably, Florida hardly at all. Texas has made it a law that the children can't be masked. I believe, or I believe Florida has done the same. Since last year, these schools have been open. How is it that our children are different? Why are our children different here? I ask you guys that. Find one case, please, because it's liability, you guys are saying. Every school board, it's liability. Our attorneys say liability. If the student doesn't wear a mask, somebody catches it because they didn't wear a mask, we're going to be sued. We haven't found one single case of that happening in the entire country or the state, not one. We've been accused of everything at this point, teachers unions, and we know, we support the teachers. We found that eighty to ninety-five percent of all teachers, parents, and students don't want the masks, and they certainly don't want forced vaccinations. Sorry, guys. So we spoke about South Dakota Pioneer stark contrast. It was like a football team had won a division championship. That guy was amazing. We talked about Burstein and Zucker and Cuomo. They, they are throwing you guys under the bus. They don't care about you guys. They care about protecting themselves. They care about writing books. They care about their overtime. They do not care about you. They do not care about the children. Governor Cuomo's daughter is having a wedding this weekend. Any of us find it ironic that all of the mandates except for schools just happened to drop this week? He's been on camera over and over and over again stating he cannot force these mandates. Right now, forcing masks, that's a medical device, and when the vaccinations come and you guys decide to force those, you partner with Erie County Department of Health, you're acting as a physician without a license. We know this because we have attorneys that we work with that is felony in all fifty states. The blue and gray masks, this blue and gray mask. Now again, I'm here to advise you guys. These have been found with studies. They contain trace amounts of asbestos in them. That's a certified fact. Now, I wore it because the individual who asked me to wear it, I did that out of respect and reverence for them. I asked you guys why the children are wearing masks. We talked about, there's a Stanford study. I think we can all trust Stanford mutually, right? Mutually agree upon Stanford. It's a pretty widely accredited school. There's a Stanford study on masks that I think you guys should all view. It'll be very, very enlightening. And there's another, there's another study that just came out. How can we be educators and think that that mask doesn't have all kinds of contagions, virus and bacteria on it? The moment you touch it, it's loaded. There was a study and analysis that was finally done and released today. We sent that to you guys. I hope you all view that. Wearing the masks for children, we spoke to school nurses all across the country. The things that were articulated here tonight, they're being hidden. Schools, so what we're being told by schools is that we're following the rules, but you're not. You're following the rules that you want to follow that protect you guys from the teachers unions and liability that you think that's out there. But the rules that you're not following are the rules that state clearly only children that can medically tolerate a mask. That one conveniently got ignored. Six thousand. So another argument that we said was if we could protect one child, we know that this didn't protect any children. Two hundred and five children listed as having died in 2020, now all of them of comorbidity, every one of them. Not one child has died listed by CDC in 2021. Six thousand children, guys. Six thousand children committed suicide in 2020. Opioid addiction for school-aged children through the roof. You guys know that. Twenty nineteen, twenty-five hundred children killed themselves. It's an increase of a hundred and fifty percent. Who cares about them? And they've stated it before, everybody can be everywhere without masks, even these children. We've talked about you guys being responsible, talked about the one case, guys Pioneer. You know, one of the arguments that we received was we're different than that school. Why would you want to be different than that school? Nobody's at risk. And those handful of teachers and the teachers unions that you're standing to protect, why are you standing to protect them and not the vast majority? Why aren't you? When have you ever had a board meeting like this? I, I know that there's years and years and years have gone by. You guys probably haven't seen a fraction of the people that are here. Why don't the voices here matter? Nuremberg Trials 2.0, this is another piece of information for you guys. There's an attorney that sued Volkswagen successfully. He's commissioned over a thousand attorneys across the world, and they've begun the investigation, and it's called Nuremberg Trials 2.0. They're investigating everybody that has been involved, that will include school boards and superintendents, guys. Teachers unions have mocked us, saying pull your students. We don't care. We still have our jobs. We're protected, just like Governor Cuomo came out back in March and said, everybody, if you're a state employee, you're protected. You're going to get paid. All while parents were told they were nonessential. They had to figure out how to pay the school taxes, right? But all the teachers were paid. We talked about Cuomo as well. The Lancaster School District guys, I'm sure you're all aware of it. You want to talk about liability, Lancaster is being sued by two families right now. Hold the willies representing them. We know from school nurses that asthma and other conditions are in the increase and on the rise, children passing out. And the rules that those school nurses and administration aren't following is they're not reporting that. Why? Why are those injuries not being reported? Risk assessments for children with masks, guys, you have to conduct a risk assessment for every child that wears a mask, and you also have to have a sterilization station for those masks. They have to be properly fitted for thirty minutes. It's a thirty-minute fitting procedure. We know that because OSHA has told us that, and mask experts have told us that. I'm almost done, guys. I do really appreciate. I do really appreciate your time, thank you. We talked about that. You cannot lose state funding. You know that. It's illegal. We know that. We've been told that and superintendent cannot be decertified. We know that, guys, that's another argument that's being used here. So, and the last thing, we've talked about masks and I appreciate your time. Vaccinations, ninety-nine point nine, because that's coming, we know that, we know Cuomo's playbook. He's going to put you guys on the hot seat. He's going to come out about the end of August. He's going to say, you got to get everybody vaccinated. He's already said, I want people twelve to eighteen vaccinated in September and I want kids five, five to twelve vaccinated. They're not a threat. Zero to twenty-five, zero deaths this year, two hundred and five last year, they're not a threat. Over ninety-nine point nine nine seven survivability yet. He wants them vaccinated, why? Today or two days ago, in his live press conference, Cuomo literally stated, I'm vaccinated, if I am vaccinated, his words, you can go look it up, I hope you do. If I am vaccinated, someone who is not, and this is common sense forever and ever anyways, for all epidemiologists, immunologists and virologists, they know this. And vaccination experts, they know this from any pharmaceutical company. If you're vaccinated, someone who is not vaccinated is not a threat. Same thing applied to masks. If you want to wear a mask, wear the properly fitted mask and someone else without a mask is not going to be a threat to you. So Governor Cuomo, let me repeat that. Came out two days ago, said very, very clearly and plainly, I'm vaccinated. If someone else is not vaccinated, they are not a threat to me. Two days ago, guys, thank you for writing that down and researching that. And guys, we are without a doubt, you guys know the numbers of children that have been pulled from this school district. This woman so eloquently stated those numbers. We are advising every parent to get their letters of intent in to the superintendent's office before the end of the year. And then by August fifteenth, funding is going to be hemorrhaged in this school. And then we are going to advise everybody to withhold their school taxes as well in every district. We don't want to do this. We want to work with you guys. But when you're, I don't know if you're misinformed or people are straight up lying to you, but the facts that you see as facts aren't facts at all. Thank you for your time.
Hi, everyone. I know some of you up here, some of you may know me.
Oh my God.
Sorry. I know all of you up here care about the kids in Eden. And I just really ask that you listen to what everybody had to say tonight and take it into consideration. I've talked to Mr. Sartissio through email a little bit. I know that you shared some of your feelings with me and I really truly hope that you take time to research, to consider what the parents want, not just the ones that are here. Some couldn't be here because they had to work. But it's so important to listen. My husband and I both went to Eden. It's such a good, great, wonderful community. That's why we chose to raise our kids here. And I want to be able to continue to say that. And I think other people feel that way too. I can only speak for myself. I know you guys are all wonderful people. I know you care about the kids. But I want some actions to be done, at least about it, or you know, that's why we're here. It's very, very important that we start now and I'm just, we thank you for your time, thank you for your work and appreciate you guys very much, thanks.
Okay, thank you. And we'll be moving into the rest of the agenda. New business resignations. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of bus driver Mon Best be accepted effective June thirtieth, 2021. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Best for her twenty-two years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of bus driver Michael Best be accepted effective June thirtieth, 2021. The board and administration wish to thank Mr. Best for his sixteen years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of bus attendant Joanne Zalinski be accepted effective June twenty-third, 2021. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Zalinski for her fifty-one years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? Fifty-one years, that's pretty amazing.
That is amazing.
So, thank you, Joanne. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Okay, if we could move to Mrs. Feldman. Thank you. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Laura Feldman be granted tenure as Director of Finance effective July fifth, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion?
May I?
Sure.
Can't be nervous now. So, Mrs. Feldman, I just want to thank you again publicly for your leadership in the district, your painstaking articulation and patience and how you present some really complicated processes. We've only been working together since last July, but I've learned a lot from you and I rely on quite a bit. This tenure is well earned and I'm glad that you're either such with my right hand, so thank you for everything.
Agreed.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried. Congratulations.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Amy Lincoln, who is permanently certified in elementary education and professionally certified in literacy birth, your sixth grade, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the elementary tenure area. Probationary period commencing on September first, 2021 and ending on August thirty-first, 2024. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only. So we can just skip to the very last line, salary is based upon ETA contract master's step ten.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Deborah Helsher be appointed on probation as a part-time cafeteria monitor effective September seventh, 2021 and ending March sixth, 2022. Salary is based upon CFEA contract level two, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Dylan Tylock be appointed as a summer seasonal cleaner in the technology department effective July sixth, 2021 until completed. Salary is twelve dollars fifty cents per hour.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Can I just ask a quick question? The three new appointees that we had, are they here in the audience? You don't need to use anybody else. You just stand, really quick, we need to be a quick class. Congratulations. Okay, thanks for doing it. Technology integrators, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following people be appointed as summer technology integrators for twenty days. This will be a shared position, Amber Claussen, Jeffrey Meister, Randy Pearson.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following people be appointed to summer transportation position. E. Peter Belgium, driver in attendant. Jeanette Fonzar, driver. Linda Chris, driver. Danielle Gable, driver. Kathleen Janko, driver. Cynthia Casper, driver and attendant. Karine Kenefick, driver in attendant. Heidi Mahoney, driver. Judith Plesch, driver in attendant. Alan Polinsky, driver in attendant. Cynthia Rankus, driver. Elizabeth Rogers, driver. Bradley Susana, driver. Noelle Sisti, driver and attendant. I skipped Beverly Santa, attendant, sorry. And getting back to Noelle Sisti, driver and attendant. Vincent Baco, driver. Paul Winter, driver. Deborah Holsher, attendant. Emily Bauer, attendant. Frances McCabe, attendant. Diane Strong, attendant. Mary Tereshvitz, attendant. Joanne Zalinski, attendant. Diane Zimmer, attendant.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the stipend for Joseph Winnicky's Assistant Track and Field Coaching Stipend be updated to five hundred dollars for the 2021 season.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Karen Boziaki, music teacher, be increased from point six FTE to point seven four FTE for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the creation of the following positions be approved. Director of Technology and Communication Services. Director of Educational Services, CIO. Note, these two positions will replace the Director of Information Technology, CIO, administrative position upon the returning of Mrs. Carissa.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the district safety plan be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Business report.
Good evening, I just wanted to give you some updates. The CARISA, which is the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act, the deadline for application was June fifteenth and New York State has extended that to June thirtieth. We are working on applying for that grant as we speak. We are waiting further guidance on the ARPA funding, which was presented earlier because we still don't have all the guidelines and information for the application yet. I'd like to thank the Town of Eden Police Department for bringing to the district an opportunity to apply for a COPS grant to purchase professional grade two-A radios. That is due June twenty-second, I continue to work on that. And then request to have students transported to private schools within the fifteen-mile limitations has been extended to June twenty-fourth. Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, I just want to start by sharing my appreciation with the community members we spoke this evening. I appreciate that you shared your thoughts and concerns with the board. I appreciate those of you who've reached out to me personally, either via email or your direct conversation. I do understand and share in many of your frustrations. You are absolutely correct that there has been a significant amount of government oversight from a number of different entities this year. But I don't want you to lose sight of how much has actually been accomplished as well. The fact that our children have been back in school five days a week, depending on their age and within three feet is really a big component of one of the things I'm proud of. There is an awful lot of advocacy that goes on to make some of these happen, some of these things happen. I can tell you that superintendents do band together and we do know that we have a stronger voice together. And what we're pushing for now is guidelines that return students to school five days a week without masks in September. And that is our focus and that is our push. I understand you may be looking for more of that in short term, but I wanted to make sure you heard from me that that strong focus about returning students to school in September without masks is out there and will continue to be our focus as we move forward. So moving on in my regular report here, so an education year does not wind down. And we often hear that when you run into some folks who don't work in the school system. Is your winding down actually winds up? And then it comes to a pretty much a screeching halt in about a week, week and a day from now. I want to thank our families, our teachers and support staff and of course our building administrators for all they've done and will continue to do to celebrate our students this year. Despite the circumstances, I think everyone involved has really done a fantastic job at creating opportunities for kids to have fun and to be celebrated. And I mean that at all levels. The culminating event in any school district is graduation. This has happened numerous times this year, new guidelines were sent out today. Mr. Lyons, Mr. Cooper, Mr. Carrero and I will now decipher these latest documents to determine how our ceremony may be impacted. Interestingly, as related to previous comments, the new graduation guidelines are significantly more lenient than previous versions. So that supports some of what was said earlier in that many venues of life, things have gotten much more lenient and I promise you that we are using that information to our advantage and our advocacy. Tonight, we do honor twelve district teachers and administrators who've earned tenure this year. I do want to acknowledge each of you individually as well as recognize those who have commitments elsewhere this evening. So if you're here, please stand or more likely just give a wave so we can put a name and a face together. Because tonight is our tenure celebration. It was our last scheduled meeting of the year and I think it's very important to recognize these folks. So I'm going to read a list of names here. I know the first few are not here, so those of you who are worried about when you're going to wave about halfway through the list is when your name will come up. Shannon Henigan Fitzgerald, counselor at GLP and the elementary building. Heather Ratter is a grade six middle school teacher. Gabrielle Rodriguez is a special education teacher at our middle school and our high school. Madison Weber is a third grade teacher at our elementary building. Helen Neb is their social worker at our middle school and our high school. Brad Agen is a special education teacher at the middle school and high school. And now Sarah Fiorella is a first grade teacher at GLP. Congratulations. Kelly LaRosa is the principal of Eden Elementary, where are you, Kelly? I thought you might stand, Kelly, I thought if anyone would, no, okay. Laura Feldman, Director of Finance. I knew you would not stand, I knew that. So Kristy Height, Special Education Teacher at GLP. There we go. Thank you for being a brave soul, you get the first piece of cake. Jamie Peterson, Speech Language at GLP. And Joshua Walker is a kindergarten teacher at GLP and I know he had a very important event tonight as well. So thank you for your efforts on behalf of Eden students. Earning tenure is a momentous occasion in the life of an educator. It's an accomplishment and a milestone, but it is only one of many in each of your careers. Each of you are rightfully proud of this accomplishment, of course. The board and I share this pride with you. It is important to remember that tenure is really the beginning and each year is another opportunity to improve yourself and prove yourself because the work you do, no matter what it is, is critical in the life of children. On behalf of the Board of Education, the Eden School Community and your colleagues, I congratulate you and thank you. And don't forget, we're having a reception at the conclusion of this meeting. There's a really big cake and I can't eat it all myself. Congratulations.
Is there a student report? Yeah, but I, and last time a parent did it for us. I didn't know if he had, they had passed it along, I know they're busy, but thank you. Yeah, but I, and last time a parent did it for us, I didn't know if he had, they had passed it along, I know they're busy, but thank you. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I can just, I can kind of say, you know, even though the seniors' last day was yesterday, it's, it's been a whirlwind for them. Coming up on, on graduation, I know a lot of sectional playoffs are starting next week. And having a senior daughter right now, she just, she goes, I've got it easy dad. I don't know how some of the underclassmen are handling this right now with exams coming up. With the sports going on right now, a lot of them are working, so it's been, it's been a stressful time for, for the Yale classmen, I know that, so.
And now for Board Report Roundtable.
I just wanted to say quickly, just to piggyback on what Jeff said, there is, I know the superintendents are doing a lot of advocacy. I go to many of the legislative meetings through the Erie County Association of School Boards and there is a lot of advocacy happening there. But like everything with the state, it moves at a snail's pace, but you know, I, I do appreciate all the comments today and I am a parent of two children. Both severe asthmatic in the district, so I understand the concerns that are being presented and they're not falling on deaf ears. But I just want to make it clear that we are doing our best collectively as board members and the superintendents to band together to advocate for what's in the best interest of the children moving forward. This was a tough year with a lot of tough decisions that had to be made. And I felt like we were constantly pivoting every five seconds to switch to something different. And it was exhausting, it's exhausting for everybody, as educators, as parents, as administrators. And we're all looking forward to a new year with a fresh quote-unquote normal start. So that is my hope and we, I will continue to work towards that as both a parent and a board member. On a different note, I did want to ask, I've been getting a couple of questions about if the workout center is going to reopen anytime soon for the public, the workout center, the gym. Fitness Center, sorry, moving on to terminology.
I have no idea.
Okay, there's my answer.
We'll put that on the list, so thanks for bringing that.
And I did want to publicly say too, Jeff, you and I have had some conversation on this. But I think moving forward as we look for next year's calendar, I've also gotten a lot of frustrated comments about half-days this year. And I know we've talked, I just want to publicly state, it is on my radar for any parent who is listening, I understand the frustration. I'd like to figure out, work with the district to figure out, there may be reasons why, but we will, I will have answers for people. I just didn't want to think the call was unheard, because I get it, it's hard when you're a working parent and juggling half-days and it's almost easier if it's just home. So I understand, but we're working on it. Anybody else?
The next Board of Education meeting is the reorganization and regular meeting on Wednesday, July seventh, two thousand twenty-one at seven PM in the Eden Elementary School. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education meeting be adjourned at eight twenty-five PM.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming.